And generating solar power and reducing our electrical signature going green. As an example of one month in the life of Boron the Meadows, where we had the year before a $7,985 electric bill. A year later, we have a $38 electric bill. With that, I would like to introduce David Baldwin from Altera. He used to be with Chevron and Altera was a spinoff. Chevron sold him. David will give us a short presentation. This is for information, and then we'll bring it back next year to give another update. David?
Thank you, Jerry. As Jerry mentioned, in 2012, we began this journey. And by the summer of 2013, the construction was completed and we had also provided some teacher professional development. We followed that up three years later with some additional teacher professional development. We are in the monitoring and verification phase right now, so every year, we will be providing an update basically on the previous year's results, which also includes an energy guarantee. You'll note that the three goals going into the program included general fund dollar savings, connecting the STEM careers to the facility improvements, and then creating local jobs through the construction of the project. As Jerry mentioned, the scope of the project included solar at 13 of the schools, but it also included LED lighting at 11 sites. And one of the things that you'll see in the photo is that solar is more than just electricity production. It is also shade for students eating lunch and shade for cars in the parking lot sometimes. As I mentioned, the education program, that should read 2015, but on May 12th and 13th, 2015, we had 23 teachers in participation for professional development. There were hands-on activities involved with that. And one of the things that is available on the website is access to the data for the systems, and teachers are able to access that and show the students what's going on and so forth. And this is just one example of the great responses that we got from the principal at Los Pocas. Every year, as I mentioned, we will have an annual summary of the solar system results, and this is an example of the chart that we review with Jerry and Terry. Basically, it includes the solar production, both in kilowatt hours and dollars saved. It also includes the PG&E incentives that are paid, and then we add the two together and we come up with a total savings. You can see through year one, including the construction period, the savings is $516,000 over a year, a little bit over a year. We're due for year two's results very shortly. You can see that the annual period runs from October, well, April 1st to March 31st every year. So after March 31st of this year, we will have another year's worth of information. So that $516,000, if we go to the next slide, is used to pay for the expenses of the project. And this project, as you can see from the summary table, costs $6,514,000. Six million? Good point. Yeah. And it was all financed. And so the savings paid for the loan fees, and you can see in the bottom chart that the savings over the year and a half, net of all costs, is $54,833. And up above, you can see the annual cash flow that's projected is $52,648. So we're plus about $2,000 through year one, and we hope to do just as well in the years to come. So that's a very quick overview of the project's scope and the savings performance to date.
Any questions?
I have a question. You know, we talk about clean energy and this being part of that concept. I know some of this is used for parking lot shades, and we have our hot days here, our hot season, August, September. Kids will spend a lot of time under that structure. There's nothing that can harm the kids as far as a health issue?
Nothing I'm aware of. Thank you. I had just two quick comments on closing. One of the beauties in public school business of having solar is that we have huge generation and we have little use over the summer when most of our facilities are closed, and so that gets dumped into the grid during high use periods across the state, so we make a lot of money on that. And finally, David mentioned that we had shade structures, not counting the shade structures for parking, just the six that we've placed for our students to eat under. We've avoided a cost of $60,000 per structure or $360,000. We would have otherwise put in some metal or some other kind of shade structure. Thank you very much.
Yeah, we're actually, B1?
Good afternoon, Superintendent Martinez. I'm a member of the board, colleagues, and members of the UBS Chines. Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. And I have before you a contract for legal services from Atkinson-Andelson, Loyah-Rudd, and Romo. And I want to share with you tonight, November 14th, District Representative has reviewed several requests or proposals for legal services, and we selected AALR as one that we'd like you to consider for representing us on special ed services. AALR has over 180 attorneys. They have over 30 years of experience, or been practicing for over 30 years. They've been recognized as top 20 mid-sized law firms in the nation, also ranked among the top 100 law firms in the state of California. And it's also very common to see them present at the annual ACS special ed conference every challenge counts. So I ask that you consider approval of a contract for legal services focusing on special ed with AALR law firms.
Any questions? Any comments?
Well, we're hoping to avoid their use.
Correct. Yes.
Yeah, but if we need it, they're the best.
Correct.
Thank you. Just as a large guard, you have the floor?
Thank you, sir. Frank Garland from Mission Park School as Children's District. I just interviewed a packet of materials. I think it's a good idea to learn as much as possible about a law firm before you hire them. As you can see, the Fresno V is reporting with the law firm of Atkinson-Andelson, Loyah-Rudd, and Romo. It is currently in hot water for erroneous legal advice it provided the Fresno Unified School District, which is now considering a malpractice suit against the firm. One of the board trustees has quoted as saying, "I think the public should be concerned that money that was intended for the students of FU SD is being spent on legal bills. We're potentially paying hundreds of thousands, if not millions, of legal fees, and this is because of poor advice from attorneys, then the attorney's malpractice carrier should be paying this cost." She's referring to a leaseback contract awarded to a construction firm. And I know our school district has entered into a couple of those in the last 12 months, so you want to make sure that you're getting sound legal advice when the language of those contracts comes before you for approval. I'm also very concerned about the clause at section four of the contract with the law firm. This clause is Roman numeral IV, page five. The way I read it, it basically waives your right to a jury trial and appeal. So this clause, in my opinion, would basically bar you from pursuing a malpractice suit against the law firm that's appeared court, thereby insulating them from any kind of liability similar to what they're encountering in Fresno. You know, we've had attorneys in recent memory counsel this board to continue, for example, fighting the CTA in a labor dispute until a $3 million judgment was handed down in favor of the teachers. A couple of months ago, I suggested that you direct your staff to bring back a cost analysis of what has been spent in legal fees over the last three years versus the cost of bringing your legal counsel in-house. My experience has been in my line of work that the primary interest of outside law firms is to accrue as many billable hours as possible because they thrive off of discord at the public expense. Billable hours are what key law firms in business. So I have three requests tonight. Number one, reject the contract with Atkinson, Loyah, Rudd, and Romo. There are too many red flags. Please read the three articles I've provided to you. Actually, it appears Los Bonos Unified School District is also dissatisfied with their service, so you can check that out. Number two, please direct your staff to bring back a detailed cost analysis that breaks down your average legal fees per month, taking into account all invoice is received in the last three years. And the reason I ask that is because I want you to do a comparison to number three, where I'm asking you to think outside the box. We have three elementary school districts here in Salinas. Consider hiring one staff person for, let's say, $150,000. Let's split that cost three ways between Salinas City, Alisal Union, and the third one, Santa Rita. I would suggest that you direct the superintendent to reach out to those school districts to see if there's any interest in forging such a cost-sharing arrangement, and then splitting up the staff attorneys' time three ways. A $50,000 annual cost for legal services sure sounds a lot better to me than several hundred thousand, which is what Fresno is currently complaining about. I just don't want to see us wind up in the same or similar situation.
Thank you. Some of their comments? Questions?
Oh, I have a question. I'm sorry. This law firm is going to be specifically used for special education. Is that clear? Okay. I happened to attend one of their special education presentations when I was down to CSBA conference, and I was very impressed with what they said, you know, with their knowledge of special education law and with their resume in terms of special education. So the rest of this, I'm, you know, this is disappointing, but I noticed there's nothing in here about special ed, so that's a good thing. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. President, may I, Mr. Chair, I understand it was a committee representative of the district in different levels, administration, board members, and others. And the background check was executed?
Correct. Correct. And they all had to?
And there was a lot of Q and A going back and forth about all the interviewees?
Correct.
That were there that day?
Yeah.
Okay. And my understanding is this firm is December 1st through June, what is it, the 30th? Was it due date? I mean, the dates covered in the cover page.
Yeah, looks like a year and a half.
A year and a half or so. But during, just for my board members and myself right here in the public, is that, you know, since I was there during the interview, but at the same time, there was a lot of, there were different types of law firms that were interviewed, but also we went in deep into different questions and see what we can come up with. This is one of them. The recommendation is to approve the contract, legal services with AALR as the firm. And if the president allows me, there are no other questions or concerns, I would like to make a motion that we accept this recommendation from the administration. It's on the record.
Okay, so may I have a motion to accept? Staffs suggested that we hire this firm for our special education needs. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
And do we have any discussion? Well, is there any?
I'd like to know. I'd like to see. You know, it's very, very difficult to find a law firm that is completely clean. I mean, I know that we have law firms on board right now with this district who have a questionable path or questionable actions in the past. Personally, I don't feel like I have enough information on this law firm. I'd like to learn more before I can make a, make some type of decision on this.
Okay. Well, that was my question. I don't know that much about it either, but I wonder, is there an urgency? Do we need attorneys right now?
We look back at the legal council, yeah, the president.
So as you, can I say a couple of words? As you know, special education is probably one of the highest litigation areas of litigation for a district. It is an area from which we need to cover our bases. And I could just say, you know, I've worked with AALR. They, they were our first choice, but in the area of special education, Elizabeth Ruin is one of the highest level representatives in the state of California. So, you know, like I said, we've used, I've worked directly with this firm in North Monterey County. They were our legal representation for almost everything, not in construction, but in all of the other educational areas necessary. And what we have here is we have different firms that represent different interests of the district, but I just would caution us not to belabor this. We went through a process. We put the RFP out there. Law firms were notified, both locally and throughout the state, invited to submit their testimonials to us. Those were reviewed. We brought in, we think, a diverse representation of folks on there, board trustees included on that panel. And so, you know, I think there are three major law firms in the field of education in the state of California that I'm aware of, and they're within those top three.
Mr. Donaldson, do you have a comment? Oh, Mr. Ramos.
Oscar Ramos, a teacher? I, was there, am I misunderstanding, did they write a clause in there that pretty much said, "If we screw up, we're not responsible, you're responsible"? Is that my understanding?
Can you refer to that in there?
I don't, I've been during Mr. Garland's presentation and was there, was there a clause that the law firm included in their contract that said, "If we make a mistake, you can't sue us, you still have to pay"? Because I didn't get a copy of that.
No.
I didn't, I'm not sure what Frank was referring to because I don't, the page five, my page five didn't have anything like that on it, my page five.
Because why is the district still, why do they still have to pay $220,000? I mean, okay, well, anyway, that was, I was hoping someone skimmed through that because I don't have that article, but I thought I heard that there was a clause written in there where if they screw up, they're not responsible.
Yeah, I would like him to. I'd welcome him to show me on my, because I don't see it.
I don't know if that's, that's why I'm asking. Well, anyway, if that's the case, then you should really look at the content, make sure we don't have that sort of clause in there too, or they mess up, then the district's left. I don't know if that was the case, because that was my question, was that in the article?
Just very briefly, I will clarify that it's the binding arbitration clause on page five. The parties are agreeing to an alternative method of dispute resolution rather than going to court, and it's called arbitration.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have a motion. Do we have any more discussion? Mr. Donaldson? As I had. Ms. Rarias?
I just had a question about the dates. I'm looking at this agreement, it's back for December 1st, two months ago. I'm not sure if there's, you know, why is it go back so far? Even I see a signature for Mrs. Martinez back a month ago. I don't know that if, you know, I tried to read this, but it's a little out of my comfort zone. Are we paying them like a retainer or something for two months that we haven't even signed a contract? That part isn't. Mr. Donaldson?
Yes, I was a part of the group to review the RFPs and a part of the process. A couple of issues. Mr. Gard refers to the binding arbitration issue, which goes to disputes between the firm and the district. Those are, I'm not a lawyer, I want to represent myself that way. However, those are disputes that have to do with billing, other kinds of things of that nature. It does not take away the ability to sue regarding some kind of tort or excess problem in their duties. It would put us at risk secondarily. I've had some experience with Steve Anderson, who founded the firm, back with the MN Personnel Council, who served most of the districts in Southern California, and the experiences have been stellar, and I will just reinforce what our superintendent already said, around the special ed. There are two primary places that you find service. We had been with Triple F before, now going with Atkinson-Andelson, Loyah-Rudd, Romo. Again, you're getting stellar service, much better attuned to our own needs. And regarding the retainer, there is no retainer. The contract states the rates that you'll be billed for the services that are ready. Until those services are rendered, there is no payment. It is for direct services.
Is that any other discussion? Okay, then I'll call for a vote. There's a motion on the floor to approve the contract for legal services with law firm Atkinson-Andelson, Loyah-Rudd, and Romo. Consecutive, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed?
I will let the chairman decide.
Okay. Four ayes and an abstention. Motion passes.
Okay, so I'm asking the board approve a variable term waiver request, and that's for a third grade teacher currently assigned to Boron the Meadows. In order for her to continue in that role, in that position, we're submitting an application that we'd like to submit with California Commission on Teacher Confidentiality to allow her to continue to do in that position. She did not qualify for a provisional internship permit. However, the variable term waiver allows, provides her additional time to complete all requirements for credential, and she's currently in the credential program with health state.
Does this grant the waiver or does this apply for a waiver?
We need your approval in order to submit the waiver and get it approved.
Okay.
It's a request to submit the waiver.
Well, I hope we approve the request. Second.
Motion to approve the request in a second. Do we have any discussion? Okay. All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All closed? Five zero. Motion passes.
So now we have another request for a different teacher who is currently filling a position as a multi-severe kindergarten first teacher in the University of Park, and we're asking to submit a provisional internship permit so she can remain in that position. And we believe she's a good fit, she's providing excellent services, and she is completing the credential program at CSUND.
Any questions? Motion?
I, I have a motion on this item, which is recommended by the special ed department, oh, is that HR, sorry, and the team that did this.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor to approve the provisional internship permit for Ms. Espinoza. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I'm. Also, we're making a home.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. I misspoke.
Actually, I have B3.
I'm sorry.
Provisional internship permit.
There's a motion on the floor to approve the provisional internship permit for Ms. Holmes in a second. All in favor? Aye. Aye. All closed? Motion carries, five zero. Oh, who is Espinoza?
Moving on to Ms. Espinoza, who is serving as a third grade teacher at La Plata, and we'd like the board to approve a provisional internship permit. She's currently assigned as a third grade teacher, and again, similar to the other individuals that we just discussed, is pursuing a credential.
This is La Plata.
La Plata, third grade.
Thank you. Third grade.
Okay, do we have a motion?
I shall move. Let the recommendation go forward.
Okay. Motion to approve provisional internship permit for Ms. Espinoza. Second. Second. Any discussion? All in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All closed? The motion carries, five zero. We're going to move on to action out of B5.
Okay, so the California Department of Education implements a visiting teacher program in two countries with Mexico and Spain, and it's been in existence for over 20 years, where the Department of Education, California Department of Education, districts throughout the state, and what equates to the Department of Education for both Mexico and Spain, have a partnership, whereas we're able to provide visas for teachers to come and visit over a period of three years, and that three-year time span, they're expected to meet credential requirements, which stem everything from passing the CBES to CSET to weak exams, et cetera, demonstrate English proficiency. And as you know, we have a teacher shortage. We also have a growing interest in our dual immersion program. And in order to meet this growing interest and expanding the program, we're asking that you tonight approve an agreement in which we're able to participate in this process. And by participate, I mean, I have the opportunity of attending an information session, and the next step would be, if approved tonight, submit the agreement, and the next steps are in March, you have a representative from California Department of Education going out to Mexico City early in March to screen out the applicants. So in a nation as big as Mexico, you have maybe 50 people across the nation who actually meet the criteria qualifications to be screened out. And from those 50, you have the CD representative who then screens out for English proficiency, which comes down to maybe a very fortunate 20. And then we compete against other districts throughout the state for two or three or four. Currently have two teachers from, one from Mexico, one from Spain, that are here with this program. Last year was their first year that we participated. Last year was their first year that we participated, and we'd like to participate again. So that's why you have the agreement before you to consider.
Questions from the board? Mr. Strata?
So the CDE dictates what countries we draw from, or is that our pride?
No, it's a program, we're participating in a program that's already been established by the California Department of Education. I know we did request to say, hey, what about other, in our Spanish-speaking countries, Costa Rica, et cetera? When I made that request, they said, well, that doesn't exist at this time. It's a, as you can see, it's a really small program, and we're talking about 20 teachers that were, if were very fortunate, and actually, from those 20 that they screened out, they were only able to offer 13 offers of employment in the year 14, 15. So at this point, they don't have the capacity, and the Department of Education, to extend beyond, beyond Mexico and Spain, and even though they're in.
So there's no financial impact toward this when it comes to recruitment?
The financial?
In other words, what I'm trying to say is, we don't have someone, a representative from our district probably to screen.
Not to, no, but if you look at the information that I provided you, and we have an option in terms of the Mexico recruitment to interview the applicants via Skype, and, or travel one person to interview the personnel. Mary had the opportunity to participate in the Skype interview last year, and that's how we, and myself and some administrators, we did this, we did them via Skype last year.
Well, you know, what I'm getting at is, my concern is, you know, Mexico's right here, Spain is.
Yes.
With Spain, can I intervene? I had an opportunity to go to Spain with the state superintendent of public instruction probably three years ago, and we actually were able to visit the Ministry of. Spain has, of all countries in the world, has the largest contingency and the largest program for visiting teachers. It's very well established. And California actually has the largest percent of teachers that we employ from Spain. Their program is just exemplary. I don't know what Mexico's is, because I can't speak to that, but I do know that Spain has had great success with their, with their teachers. And I, I thought that last year when we were invited, well, when I was invited to participate with the Spain program, that they bring their teachers here. So I think that was the difference, that the teachers actually came to the U.S., but it varies, you know, and I don't know if that's alternate years, that, you know, when the U.S. goes there, maybe they come. But it's, it gives the teachers all the experience to the actual areas from which they're going to be employed in. I just, I can only speak to what I found out by actually being in Spain and Madrid and going to the Ministry of Education with our state superintendent, and the beautiful relationship that we have developed with Spain, and the, actually, the benefits that we've reaped. And I think right now, in an era of teacher shortage, we've got to tap into any and every opportunity we can.
Yes, Mr. Strata. The MCOE recruits from the states of Oaxaca, Michoacan, and Huanahuato, and they have really high caliber teachers who come with this program. For example, Huanahuato, the city of Huanahuato brings its sister city to Salinas. So I would like to see us reach out to, reach there more, and bring some of these teachers on the local level, proximity aspect, also, I think, is important.
Yeah, do we have a motion? Oh. Yes. This has been a number of years ago, but when we were in Spain, I talked to many Spanish teachers, and they were very happy to come and teach here, and their English was very good, I can say, and I enjoyed their Spanish too very much. So, you know, that's my expert. I think they're a marvelous addition for us. Mr. Garcia?
I just want to make a motion to accept the recommendation.
I'll second. Okay. Any other discussion?
Other than say congratulations.
So I just want to, yes, as far as the cost to the district recruiting from Spain, there is, what is it, is it minimal?
Yes, as you see there, we have an option to, the only commitment is to actually interview them, because the teachers themselves will not know what type of offer they're going to get, if they're going to approve, it needs a country to come here, you know, and we're competing against other districts like NACLA, Federal Unified, San Francisco, they can be their person. So we get to do that via Skype, or the, if approved, then the only couple would be traveling to Mexico City, but the alternative is interviewing the rest of them. Skype interview.
Okay, so we're not approving any additional clauses, is that?
Just the agreement that participating.
Yes.
Okay, any other questions, comments? Okay, we'll take a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Okay, five zero, motion passes. Thank you. Next meeting, February 22nd, six thirty, at the district office, and we are adjourned.
Can I, can I just make one comment?
Yes.
For the advanced planning for our February 22nd meeting, I would just like to say that one of the items that was addressed during public comment, items that were not on the agenda, we will be bringing some information about our curriculum adoption.
Thank you. I was going to ask about that. Also, at the last board meeting, we talked about the results from the assessments, and you hadn't gotten them all yet, Lori. Is there any way that we could get an update on those results?
So I think what we have on the information, I think, and Lori, help me here, because I'm trying to remember by memory, but we have math, we have PD plant, and we have one other, the dual immersion program. So those three items are on informational items for our 22nd meeting.
Thanks.
Any other comments? Close in comments?
Yes, oh, wait, 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 before we adjourn, I am so sorry. I realized after we were already in the informational items, and, so we would like at this time to introduce our new director of special education. Would you like to give a few words?
Just a few.
Just a few. Thank you, Superintendent Martinez, President Hammond, board members. I appreciate this opportunity as the director of special education for this meeting.
Congratulations.
Well, we're so proud to have you join, stay, and be promoted within the ranks of special education. We're very confident that you will bring the skill and competence that we need to fill that position. So thank you for taking that on.
Thank you.
Okay, we're adjourned.